Our morning hearing for the House of the Union Culture Arts and International Affairs. Today is February 10th, 2023, Friday, 9:30 a.m. in room 309. First up, we have House Bill. We have House Bill 474 relating to the State of Hawaii Museum of Natural and Cultural History, appropriate funds, appropriate federal funds to sustain and support the State of Hawaii Museum of Natural and Cultural History. First up, we have D.J. Mailer.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair and Committee members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you about the Bishop Museum. You have our testimony in favor of House Bill 474. We love it. Thank you. We know that it's focused on federal monies, and so when there is an opportunity, we would love to be considered as part of that funding stream for the Bishop Museum. In the testimony, you'll see a number of statistics that show how broad and how wide and how much the Bishop Museum is engaged not only in cultural but also in natural science. So before I get into questions, I just want to invite you to the Bishop Museum. We would love to host you whenever you can, and we will listen to what you want to see, and we will make sure you see what you want to see while you're there. So with that, I'm open to questions. I am the interim CEO of Bishop Museum, and so I'm one week old there. But I was born and raised in Hawaii, worked here a lot, and so I'm privileged to be in this spot today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Members, that is all that we have signed up to testify. We do want to note that we have testimony in support from the Historic Hawaii Foundation, the Society for Hawaii Archaeology, sorry, and two individuals. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Anyone on Zoom? All right, members, any questions? Okay. Chair does have a question for you.
Sure.
So it says here that we're appropriating federal funds. Do you think that's appropriate? Is that possible, or should we change it to general funds?
You know, I'm going to ask Melissa if she can address that because she knows more of what you have to decide on that.
Thanks, Chair Tam. I know we knew there were opportunities last session for federal funds, and so this bill is derived from a bill that was introduced previously. Definitely, we are asking for operating funds out of the general fund, and whether it's in this bill or directly in the budget, either way, we just want to keep this alive for discussion purposes. So if you change it to operating funds, that would be, we would be very supportive of that.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? See none. Thank you so much. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. House Bill 475 relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. It appropriates funds to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts for the Arts in Private Places program and to establish one position for the foundation. First up, we have State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee. I'm Karen Ewald, interim Executive Director for the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. We stand on our written testimony with comments. We would welcome a general fund appropriation and a position to expand access to the arts, to where people live and work, and through visual arts and other art forms. So this would be fantastic, and we would be interested in exploring how best to implement this program. I'm open for any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Next up, we have Sean Joseph Chu.
Hello, hi, everyone. I am Sean. I'm an actor with Stage Right right now. It's my first time testifying. Just wanted to come in support of this money I built. I benefited from Creative Lab a couple of years ago and also the American Rescue Plan last year, and I think any money designated to help artists, and not just institutions, but people, and improving access across the state, I am for. So thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you so much. Members, we do have, that's all that we have testifying in person. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to testify? Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in the right before us? Okay, note that we have other testimony, one in support, and two individuals opposed. Members, any questions? See none. Chair does have a question for State Foundation on Culture and the Arts.
Yes.
Do you know how much we should have to appropriate for this position if it was to be passed?
I was looking at the salary schedule. We would prefer to have an arts program specialist for. So with that salary level and fringe benefits, about $90,000. And it would be fantastic because with this position, I think that I would want them to go into the community and listen on how best we can support the community throughout the state of Hawaii. So that's what I would, that's the number.
Thank you so much. And also, would it be, would you be open to us amending the measure to include county buildings as well?
Yes, definitely. We've had conversations actually in the past with even Mayor Kamakami, and interested in having arts and arts programming for their county, and we'd love to go across the state.
Excellent. Thank you. Members, any other questions? Rep. Capella?
Thank you so much for being here today. My question for, when you, in the bill, it just says private places. Can you explain a little bit more about potentially what those private places could be?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting word. I think in conversation, it would be nice to have it defined as city and county areas as well as, you know, we don't want to violate the rules of using public money for private places, so it would have to still be places where people can access. Like, like, one example I like is where there's always, at the Mayo Clinic, a hospital, which, you know, is accessible. There's a grand piano in the area for people to play and learn music therapy. So that kind of stuff, it would still have to be in an area where it's accessible to the public. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda. House Bill 476 relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. It allows the Works of Art Special Fund to be used for performing arts under certain conditions, provides that 40% of the Works of Art Special Fund be used performing arts, and specifies performing arts. First up, we have State Foundation on Culture and the Arts with comments.
Hello again. We do stand on our written testimony with comments. I would like to briefly emphasize a couple of important points with this bill. We support performing arts. We would welcome a general fund appropriation specifically for performing arts. But this bill to find a loophole to support performing arts can be problematic. It does redirect 40% of the funding support from the Art in Public Places program, the Hawaii State Art Museum, artists in the schools, and student art exhibitions. And it requires the funding to be used to document and video, which brings up copyright issues. And it's currently, the way it's written, not an allowable use of the 1%. So we do have some concerns, and we would request that the state, like I said before, support performing arts with a general fund appropriation. I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Department of Budget and Finance in opposition.
Chair, members of the committee, Neil Mihaiura. I'm the Budget Division Chief for the department. The department stands in opposition to this bill. The 1% money comes basically primarily from debt, either from GO bonds or revenue bonds. So it's not appropriate to use debt financing for operating type expenditures.
Okay. Next up, we have DEBED.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Georgia Skinner, Division Chief, Creative Industries Division at DEBED, on behalf of our Director Chris Sadiasun. Thank you. We offered comments. We stand on those comments, and just wanted to point out, along with my colleague from the State Foundation, that the section of the bill regarding taping and intellectual property requires a great deal of additional oversight. You want to make sure that the intellectual property from original works, like those of Sean Joseph Chu and others, are protected and paid for. And that also means royalties to those individuals. And I would tend to agree with our Budget and Finance comment that really the purposes of the fund, I think, need to be looked at. So perhaps general fund is the better option here. And we look forward to having any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Arts Alliance on Zoom.
Aloha. I'm Evan Anderson, Executive Director of the Hawaii Arts Alliance. Is my audio working? Can I see a thumbs up?
Yes, it is.
This is my first time issuing testimony. Greetings, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee. Thank you for letting me join you again via Zoom. I submitted testimony on behalf of the Alliance reflecting our comments about this bill. We stopped short of opposing, but we wanted to point out, and as I did in my testimony, that it is a complicated, and as previous testimonies have stated, it's a complicated and technically fraught bill. At its heart, though, it is a bill to support the arts, and the Hawaii Arts Alliance is, as part of its mission, supports all the arts across Hawaii. And we welcome efforts by legislators to put forth legislation supporting the performing arts, particularly who, as I reflected in my testimony, have been very hard hit by the pandemic and are struggling to recover well into our third year of the pandemic. So we welcome the spirit of the bill. But I wanted to also, and I reflected a lot of the statistics in my written testimony, but I wanted to offer briefly my perspective as an educator and the reason why we couldn't, as an alliance, support this bill. Our dual mission is to provide arts education around all the arts statewide. And we have been closely involved with the development of programs and support of programs that the Hawaii State Foundation puts forth for archaic in schools, namely the Artists in the Schools program and the Art Bento program through the Hawaii State Art Museum, which are directly funded through this 1%. Taking a chunk as large as 40% out of the appropriations for our, for programs such as this will make it all but impossible to support, much less grow them in the way that we want to, to reach more keiki across the islands. So as an educator, we welcome the initiative to support the performing arts. We would like the performing arts to be funded at a proportional level to the visual arts and education around the visual arts. But we request that we become more creative and possibly more generous in our means of funding. So general allocation or other vehicles to support this, the performing arts across the state are welcome and warmly invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sean Joseph Chu in support.
Hello. I'm, as I said, I only know artsy things, so I'm supporting, and I'm a performer, I'm a theater artist, so I like money for theater artists, not just myself. Whatever technical things, as were said by people more wiser in these things, as stated previously, I feel like that is important. I do want to say, though, that I, it's funny, this, I came across this bill because last year, a couple of years ago, I was in conversation with one of my friends, Nikki, who works at SCCA, and I was, and when I, well, actually, it was because I got that ARP grant to do a play reading last summer. And then I started reading about arts in public places, and I had never really read bills before, and I was like, oh, there's 1% of monies going to artists, yay! But what about performing artists, too? So it's all that to say, whatever version of this bill manifests for specifically performing artists in, that is wise and carefully crafted, I am in support. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. That is all the individuals that have signed up to testify in person. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify or in person? See none. Chair wants to note that there are three other individuals that have submitted testimony, written testimony in opposition. Members, any questions? Rep. Garrett?
Thank you, Chair. State Foundation, please.
Hi.
Hey, good morning. How much do you currently have in your special fund?
Currently, our balance is $7 million, and that is actually at a bit of a low because the last two years, we didn't get 1% fund. So we have seven, a little over $7 million. And our ceiling is currently $5.5 million per year.
Okay, and do you historically spend it down every year?
Yes, we historically spend it down. I ensure that the funds get out there. Lately, the last year, we've been a little more mindful of spending it because of the CIP. There was a bill designation issue that did get worked out through Budget and Finance in the Comptroller's memorandum, but, so I am more mindful of spending it this year. But we don't like to have too high of a balance of the 1% for sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? If not, Chair does have a question for BNF. Okay, thank you so much. So my question is, you know, if we were to blank out the 40%, and just allow the State Foundation to go ahead and spend anything they want, is that permissible or no?
You know, if I remember correctly, this Arts in Public Places was, we were, we were, if not the first or one of the first states to institute a law like this. If you read the statutes, it's all about putting arts in public places. It's all geared to physical assets. That's why we're using, you know, a small portion of bond proceeds allocated to this. It is not intended to be used for this. So we would oppose any use of this for anything other than what it was originally set up for. If you want to fund a performing arts thing, we would highly recommend that you appropriate general funds for this purpose.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? See none. We're going to move on to our last item on the agenda. House Bill 269 relating to the Hawaii Theater. It designates the Hawaii Theater as the Hawaii State Theater and appropriates funds. First up, we have DLNR with comments.
All right, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, if the Trump stands on his comments, I'd like you to answer any questions.
Okay. Next up, we have Donna Blanchard, Hawaii State Theater Council in opposition. Next up, we have Hawaii Theater Center in support.
Thank you, Chair Tam, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gregory Dunn. I'm the current President and CEO of the Historic Hawaii Theater Center, celebrating 100 years of service to the community this year. I stand on the testimony that we had previously submitted. It has a great deal of facts and figures for you, but I'd like to add in an additional comment that the Hawaii Theater is an extremely unique structure in our state. It commands our respect. It deserves our commitment to preserve it for future generations. The state has made a significant investment into the theater as far back as almost 30 years ago in securing the purchase of the underlying fee as well as the extensive renovation of the theater itself. Now that we're 27 years past that, what we've learned over that time period is that because of the way the business of arts is structured, it's very difficult to ensure that we're paying wages to artists and people that work in the theater and be able to generate ticket prices that are high enough for us to meet the nearly $1 million a year that it costs to maintain the facility. That's $1 million a year that we've been, had in ongoing deficits, in depreciation, and deferred repair and maintenance. So by taking a step and recognizing the theater as the Hawaii State Theater, we're able to better work to, with the state, to plan for the preservation of this unique, this unique building, this unique venue, and ensure that we have a safe place for both artists to perform and share their art, share Hawaiian arts and culture with the world as well as provide economic benefits to the Chinatown community as well as extending the reach of Hawaii around the world. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Playbuilders of Hawaii Theater Company in opposition. Moving on, we have Sean Joseph Chu with comments.
Hello again. I, I'm also part of the State Theater Council, and I wanted to echo some things that are in the written testimony from Donna and others that the distinction between, to consider the distinction between a producing theater like Hawaii Theater and, I mean, a presenting theater like Hawaii Theater, which brings in a lot of artists from here and around the world versus a producing theater which generates original content. I think both are important in any city. I think that in addition to investing in places and institutions that, investing in groups of people like the State Theater Council, other groups that are active in our theater community here locally and across the state is important. You know, the strength, I feel like, of theater artists is, I'm not doing a good job of giving an example of, but speaking clearly, working in ensemble, working with others collaboratively. And I, this is another thing I've been thinking about recently, too, is where is there a gathering space or place of peoples who are involved in creating theater here locally, who are stewards, you could say, of our stories here? And there isn't quite a place for that. So anyway, I think just considering investing in people in addition to places are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, that is all that have signed up to testify in person. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in person? Yes?
I'm Donna Blanchard. She just called my name.
Okay, yeah.
I'm Donna Blanchard, representing the Hawaii State Theater Council in opposition to House Bill 269. You have my testimony. I'd just like to highlight a few points for you. We applaud your consideration of funding theater centers in Hawaii. We believe that locally produced theater is vital for every community to experience their shared humanity through that unique artistic conduit. humanity through that unique artistic conduit. These council member theaters are all providing those experiences within the core of Honolulu. Kumukuhua Theater has been producing plays by, for, and about the people of Hawaii for more than 50 years. Honolulu Theater for Youth is the only professional producing theater in Hawaii, providing theater and education programs for the youth of Hawaii, many of which are written and developed by local writers and artists. TAG the Actors Group produces off-off Broadway productions with a commitment to diversity and excellence. The Hawaii Shakespeare Festival produces the work of Shakespeare and other notable historical writers, introducing artists and audiences to fresh local takes on scripts that define the very foundations of theater. Playbuilders of Hawaii engages the local community by developing personal stories into theater pieces, often using those storytellers as actors in their productions. And Hawaii Mission Houses acts as a presenting stage for organizations such as the Hawaii Shakespeare Festival and Playbuilders of Hawaii, and also produces their own locally written work, reflecting historical Hawaiian personalities and events. Our membership also includes Diamond Head Theater, Manoa Valley Theater, the Ima Bright Kidd Foundation, Shaminad University Theater, Mid-Pacific Institute, UHM Kennedy Theater, Aloha Performing Arts Company on the Big Island, and Maui on Stage. If you haven't heard of some of these theaters producing work with local artists year-round in our state, it may be because to responsibly manage our organization's finances each year, we maintain relatively low budget, and especially a low budget item for marketing and PR expenses often. If funds are to be appropriated to support theater in Hawaii, we hope you'll consider supporting theaters within the Hawaii State Theater Council, which strives to elevate member organizations so that they can better serve the Hawaii Theater community and thereby the community at large. That's you, your families. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this testimony, and I remain available for questions if there should be any. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, members, we do have support from the Hawaii, written support from Hawaii Theater Center and three other individuals. We have opposing testimony from the Honolulu Theater for Youth, the Maui Community Theater, and two other individuals, and we have comments from the TAG the Actors Group and two other individuals. Members, any questions?
Chair.
Yes, Rep. Capella.
Uh, it's not a question, but comment. Is that possible?
Yeah.
I, I really appreciate the intent of this bill, and I hold a lot of deep appreciation for, as a performing artist myself, for, for the arts and for the opportunity to ensure that a place as significant as Hawaii Theater is upheld. I give up my title for Miss Hawaii in that theater, and I have a deep appreciation. I think it's absolutely beautiful, one of the most beautiful in the state. However, I think that it only serves a very small population, and I think that a lot of individuals, only here in Oahu, really get the chance to see how beautiful that theater is. Aloha Theater, which is, was in my district, their mission, the mission of Aloha Theater is to enrich the lives of Hawaii residents and visitors, and it provide quality live theater, performing arts education, and a venue for artistic expression, not just, I think in every single one of our communities, we have these small pockets of performing arts, and we really need to uplift all of them, not just one. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, members? All right, Chair does have a question for the Hawaii Theater. All right. So, you know, we're running into this issue on whether or not, you know, this is fair to just designate the Hawaii Theater. So my question is, would the theater be open to the state acquiring the ownership of the theater and the land and do something sort of like an Ealani Palace thing, where we contract out to a private nonprofit to run it?
I can't speak on behalf of every one of our board members, but I do know that as fiduciaries, they would entertain the conversation with the state to see if there was a way for us to work together for the eventual acquisition of the, of the property by the state and the operation of the, of the venue.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Convening our 9:30 agenda on the House Committee on Culture, Arts, and International Affairs in Room 309, the 9:30 AM agenda. First up, we have House Bill 474 relating to the State of Hawaii Museum of Natural and Cultural History. Members, we're going to note in the committee report that the amount that should be allocated for this would be 7.5 million, and we're going to defect the date to June 30th, 3,000. Members' discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 474, Chair elects to pass with amendment. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Garrett?
Aye.
Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Matayoshi?
Aye.
Representative Sayama and Alcos excused. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is House Bill 475. We're going to defect the date, June 30th, we're going to pass it out of the HCU, we're going to defect the date to June 30th. We are going to add in a definition for private places to, thank you, Rep. Capella for that suggestion. We're going to note in the committee report that they're asking for $90,000, and we're going to also further amend this so that we include county buildings as well. Members' discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 475, Chair elects to pass with amendment. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Noting that Representatives Sayama and Alcos are excused, any members voting? No. Any members voting with reservation? Chair, your measure is adopted.
On House Bill 476, relating to the State Foundation on Culture, Art, and the Arts, we're going to defer this measure based on the testimony provided by Budget and Finest, Finance. So defer. Recommendation is to defer. Last item on the agenda, we have House Bill 269 relating to the Hawaii Theater Center. Okay, bear with me, there will be a lot of amendments. First off, we're going to defect the date to June 30th, 3,000. We're going to amend the bill altogether to require the Department of Accounting and General Services to submit a report by December 31st, 2023, on how to acquire the theater for the theater to be a state theater and for other mixed-use purposes. And we're going to further amend the bill to designate the Hawaii Theater as the state theater on January 1st, 2025, if those certain conditions are met. We're also going to amend the bill to remove the appropriation amount. Okay, members, thank you so much for all your work on this measure and for your comments. We've received a lot of testimony from both sides, and I still have some reservations on the bill, too, but I would like to see it move forward. I think this is possibly the most reasonable way for us to move forward. Members' discussion? Rep. Matayoshi.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate your work on this bill. I know you did a significant amount of research and, and work trying to find a workable compromise. I'm still with reservations on the bill. Just kind of going off of the testimony, I'm not sure I really want us to open the door to the state acquiring every theater of significance in the state, including on neighbor islands as well. It just seems like, it seems like we might be setting a dangerous precedent, but I appreciate your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rep. Capella?
Thank you, Chair. I also appreciate your, your work on this measure. I also appreciate your hope to try and build something different. However, as someone who supports performing arts even in my own community, I cannot in good conscience support this bill moving forward, so I am going to vote with reservations, but I do appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 269, Chair elects to pass with amendment. Chair and Vice Chair vote, I'm voting aye with reservation, too?
Vote aye.
Okay. Chair and Vice Chair voting with reservation?
No, aye, I'm voting aye.
Aye with reservation?
No, 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 I'm just voting aye.
Okay, aye. So Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Any members voting with reservations? Noting Rep. Capella, Rep. Matayoshi, anybody, any members voting? No?